Hello, I'm Avram Friedman reporting for the Canary Coalition's Real News Project. On Monday, July 18th, 2016, the North Carolina Utilities Commission held a public hearing on the proposed merger of Duke Energy and Piedmont Gas. The hearing was held at the Dobbs Building in the government complex on North Salisbury Street in Raleigh. North Carolina Waste and Reduction Network, or NC Warren, Greenpeace, The Climate Times, and a group of individuals fighting against the giant monopoly energy merger organized street theater and a press conference prior to the public hearing outside on Halifax Mall. This video report is in three parts that are published in three separate segments available on the Canary Coalition's YouTube channel. The first part documents the street theater and press conference. The second part documents the public comment portion of the Utilities Commission public hearing, and the third part documents the expert testimony and question and answer period of the hearing.
Welcome to the wedding!
Piedmont Natural Gas and Duke Energy are joy in their hands in a mega monopoly. Behind those closed doors, they've bent the law that assumed opposition, that destroyed competition. In bed with the gruff, they've now pledged their love. What will all be screwed by their methane schemes? It's a sweet backroom deal that they can't conceal as they track with our futures and kill all our dreams. The so-called public staff did it act on our behalf. This merger is cursed and it couldn't be worse. Piedmont and Duke will poison the air and thank all their profits with merry care. Those who object must now speak their peace as methane rises and our options decrease. We will be heard despite what they say. We're fighting for our lives and we won't go away.
Dearly beloved, welcome. We have come together in the presence of the North Carolina Utilities Commission to celebrate the joining together of Duke Energy and Piedmont Natural Gas in matrimony. We also want to recognize and celebrate the fact that this heat we are feeling today is partly a result of the fossil fuels which these corporations are supplying and burning. The bond and covenant of this merger was established by greed and nurtured by corruption. This marriage signifies to us that Duke Energy will continue to inhabit distributed renewable energy and instead continue to pursue the fossil fuels made available by this union while sharing the profits with me and with our legislature. I bless this union between the corporations and commend it to be honored among taxpaying citizens even if the planet is overheating. The sacred union of corporate giant with corporate giant. This sacred union is intended to enhance their mutual gain and profitability and their selfish prosperity and when it is greed's will for the procreation, of course, of profit. Therefore, this marriage is not to be entered into honestly but as quickly as possible and in accordance with the purposes for which it was instituted by greed.
Hello, I'm Chris Ayers and I run the public staff for the regulators. I've already approved this marriage in what many people are calling a backroom deal. Don't be ridiculous, it's called a prenuptial. I bless this union.
Hello, I am Edward Finley, head of the Utilities Commission.
Hello.
No closer.
As your loyal regulator, and even though you are merging with another, you will always be the darling sweetheart of the NC Utilities Commission. I too bless this union.
And now Piedmont Natural Gas and Duke Energy, you will be given your vows. Do you, Piedmont Natural Gas, who protect yourself with a gas mask, do you take Duke Energy in her gas mask to be your wedded wife, to have and to control from this day forward for your mutual benefit? For richer or... No, not what it usually says. No, actually just richer and richer. So for richer and richer, of course, in sickness and in health, that is as long as you don't drink the water, to love and to exploit, to constituents, do you part?
I do.
And at Duke Energy, do you take Piedmont Natural Gas to be your wedded husband, to harness and to utilize from this day forward for the degradation and corruption of our state, for potentially richer, for the wealth of your company and the sickness of your customers and the devastation of our planet?
I do.
Now, those of you who are here to witness this corrupt marriage, if any of you can show cause why they may not be unlawfully wed, speak now or forever hold your peace.
We can't let Duke take over our energy and our government.
You should be thinking about the health of our children before you make a decision like this.
Arrest that woman!
We want cleaner, cleaner energy, not more dirty fossil fuel.
This is no marriage, it's a merger.
And this isn't for us, it's for you and your profits.
Shut her up!
What are we going to do about the coal ash, about fracking, and the pipeline that you're planning to put down?
What about solar? This only serves your interests.
We need to think about North Carolina and our residents. This union doesn't benefit anyone but you.
That's the way it's supposed to be.
We all object to this toxic union!
We all object to this toxic union!
What's more important, that people want Duke, our debt, or their bottom line? Don't make the law.
People have a profit!
We who object have spoken our peace. As methane rises, our options decrease. We will be heard despite what they say. We're fighting for our lives and we won't go away.
Those who object have spoken our peace. As methane rises, our options decrease. We will be heard despite what they say. We're fighting for our lives and we won't go away.
What do we want?
Clean energy!
What do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Clean energy!
What do we want it?
Now!
One more time, so loud that they hear us inside the Utilities Commission. What do we want?
Clean energy!
What do we want it?
Now!
Good afternoon, my name is Connie Leeper and I am the organizing director for NC Warren. I will be your MC for this press conference. Thank you for coming. We'll have ample time at the end of the presser for any questions. At 2:00 PM today, the North Carolina Utilities Commission will begin a public hearing on the proposed $6 million merger between Duke Energy and Piedmont Natural Gas. This hearing will allow the public to weigh in on what they think and how they feel about the merger. We are all disappointed that the public staff has already made a backroom deal before the first public voice has spoken to the regulators. This sweetheart deal has undermined any pretense of a fair process. The commission and its so-called public staff have already rubber-staffed the merger for meager gas customer savings and the opportunity for Duke Energy to donate even more charitable contributions to safeguard their influence peddling. And yet, despite the early deal that has predetermined the merger case, we will still exercise our civic duty to publicly engage in this regulatory chain. This presser today will feature speakers who are against the merger, and in a few minutes, they'll tell you why. Each of our speakers work for nonprofit organizations, and they represent both environmental, social, and economic justice concerns. Our first speaker will be Satana DeBury. Satana is the executive director of the Raleigh-based nonprofit, the North Carolina Housing Coalition. Next, we'll hear from Brianna Still, who is the senior program manager of the national nonprofit Alliance for Climate Education out of the Raleigh office. After Brianna, we hear from Taylor Goss, who is an Alliance for Climate Education action fellow and who is a high school student. And then we'll hear from Richard Farman. Richard is the public policy director of the Asheville-based nonprofit Alliance for Energy Democracy. And then finally, we'll hear from Jim Warren, the executive director of the North Carolina Warren. NC Warren and the North Carolina Housing Coalition, along with Climate Times, have intervened in the case and will be presenting during the evidentiary hearing that will happen after the public hearing. So first, I want to call on Satana.
Thank you Connie. My name is Satana DeBury, I'm the executive director of the North Carolina Housing Coalition. We do policy and advocacy around corporate housing in North Carolina. This morning, this week, I woke up and the house was hot, the air conditioning wasn't working, so I asked myself a couple questions. Asked myself, do I have time today for this? When could I schedule it? Did I need to put it off another day? And what I didn't ask myself was, can I afford this? Yet all over our state right now, individuals and families are asking themselves that question. For them, a hot summer doesn't mean a decision between turning on the air conditioner or not, it means a decision between air conditioning and food, or between air conditioning and gas for the car, or between air conditioning and medicine. A hot house is more than one problem to be solved. In affordable housing advocacy, we really face two issues around energy. Mainly, the number one of those is cost. Lower moderate income households that spend more than a third of their take-home pay on rent or mortgage payments have little disposable income to spend on the other necessities of life. The initial cost of energy is a concern here. Because of requests by Duke Energy and decisions by the North Carolina Utilities Commission in the last few years, North Carolinians are paying at least 20% more for their electricity. And now, at least they were able to get some relief from that payment in the summer with their gas bill. But now it looks like they're going to be stuck with these same type of increases. If you live in an all-electric house, that's a hit to your budget, but if you use gas to heat your house in the summer, I mean in the winter, you're now looking at the same type of increases. Here at the North Carolina Housing Coalition, we believe it is important to work with these organizations behind me to advocate for fair utility prices and to limit the number of rate increases for some consumers. We believe that this merger will create even less incentive for Duke Energy to be fair in this market. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Brianna Still from the Alliance for Climate Education. And Alliance for Climate Education's mission is to educate young people on the science of climate change and to empower them to take action. By empowering young people to take action with a frame of justice and optimism, we are shifting the national discourse on climate in ways that are proven to affect public opinion and policy. Young people will be the generation most affected by climate change, and it's our moral obligation to create a sustainable and just world for this generation and future generations. I say this not only as a staff member of Alliance for Climate Education, but as a North Carolinian and a young person of color for whom the impacts of not prioritizing clean energy, but instead prioritizing natural gas and fracking will continue to amplify the impacts of climate change and in turn amplify the social, economic, and environmental injustice in our state that we have an opportunity to address. A) Support equitable proclimate policies that work to pave the way for a just future for young people. Unfortunately, the proposed merger between Duke Energy and Piedmont Natural Gas, as well as the inappropriate relationship between these utilities and the McCrory administration, undermines this work and mission. But don't take my word for it, Solar. Please welcome one of our youth advocates, Taylor Goss.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taylor Goss and I'm a former action fellow with the Alliance for Climate Education. I'm 17 years old and I'm a rising senior at Carver High School in Smithville, Illinois. I'm here to speak to you because I'm aware of the fact that my future is being taken advantage of. I was born in this state and I have lived here my entire life. I love my state, and I have had the opportunity to grow up with the incredible views of the Blue Ridge Mountains to my left and the quiet serenity of the sunrises on the beach to my right. But I have grown up taking in these sights with the knowledge that there will likely be a time in my life that the Blue Ridge Mountains will be buried by smog and my coastal sunrises will be washed away by rising ocean levels due to continued dirty fossil fuel investment. The impacts of your actions by increasing our state's energy dependence on fossil fuels will impact my future and the billions that will follow behind me. Duke Energy is at a point of transition within its company. This company has a chance to make a fiscally and environmentally responsible decision to strengthen its ties to renewable energy sources. It could invest thoughtfully, prioritizing our planet's health and my future. Unfortunately, this merger is heading in the wrong direction. By growing the company's fossil fuel markets, Duke Energy is clearly prioritizing short-term monetary growth over the well-being of our planet. And when Duke Energy is heading in the wrong direction, I am looking for regulators and elected leaders to listen to the interests of North Carolinians like myself over corporations. I want to be able to take in the serenity of our mountains and the charm of our coasts as I grow older, and I am truly scared that I won't be able to do that. I am 17 and cannot vote, but that doesn't mean my voice has any less than others'. So please, Duke Energy and elected leaders and regulators, take into consideration my future when you willingly choose to contribute to the destruction of our planet and call it progress. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Richard Fireman, I'm with the Alliance for Energy Democracy. Let me tell you a story. I tried as an ordinary citizen to officially intervene with a merger procedure, murder proceedings.
Well, that's what it is, that's what it is. Taking place today, Duke Energy and Piedmont Natural Gas and the public staff worked to make my intervention not happen. Why? I think it's because they're afraid of real democracy. They'll do everything in their power to prevent an electric energy system in North Carolina that is just, equitable, participatory, and democratically controlled. The public staff claims that it works for the public interest, yet it is already pre-approved the merger despite the fact that the evidentiary hearing has not yet occurred and the public hasn't spoken. These are the criteria, in the public staff's own words, on how they will evaluate the merger. Quote, "The transaction will have no adverse impact on the utilities North Carolina retail ratepayers." Quote, "The consumers are protected as much as possible from potential costs and risks related to the transaction." Quote, "And there are sufficient benefits from the transaction to offset any such costs and risks." They claim that their investigation will, quote, "Identify into the extent possible, quantify all known and potential benefits, costs, and risks to ratepayers related to the merger." And yet they and the commission itself do not investigate or calculate any climate change related to social, public health, agricultural, or environmental consequences of making North Carolina residents dependent on a natural gas energy economy. By approving the merger, we will be on track for the worst possible scenarios of global warming. Here is just one example from the 2008 study, "Impacts of Global Warming on North Carolina's Coastal Confidence." Now, based on all 10-year-old data, it's out of date and underestimates the ecological and economic damage. We have 18 coastal counties that are in contact with coastal waters. We are due, if we continue to build out a fossil fuel infrastructure, of losing over 2,000 square miles of coastal landscape, over 2,000 square miles of coastal landscape. And this was predicted by the study by the end of the century, but new data says it'll happen by 2050 or 2060. The public staff and the commission are willing to gamble lower electric rates for a few years and Duke Energy's guaranteed profitability against losing 2,000 square miles of coastal property and landscape. The dollar value of a loss is bothersome, and it represents a moral failure of biblical proportions. The public staff claims that their investigation will identify and to the extent possible, investigate all known and potential benefits, risks, to the ratepayers related to the merger. That's just a bunch of potty air. The commission and public staff are our servants. Their responsibilities are to us, and as the North Carolina Constitution states, to our posterity, our kids and our grandkids. And they have failed their legal and moral duty best. Our democracy will not work unless we hold the commission and public staff accountable. Energy democracy means power by the people and for the people. We need to make our democracy back. If you're interested in helping out, just come up and talk to me or go to our website on our contact page because we are going to continue to fight this even after the merger is okayed by the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. My name's Jim Warren, I'm director of NC Warren, and I'm going to pick up on a few of the ideas and try to tie them together here that people have already expressed. I mean, the short version is that Duke Energy and its captive regulators are gambling North Carolina's very future on a huge expansion of fracked gas. And the gamble word comes in especially in two main areas. We have a captive regulator who is not willing to regulate the company the way they are supposed to, and this is, in fact, this merger proceeding is the fifth consecutive major case where the so-called public staff has cut a backroom deal to undermine any sense of fair process. In this case, we have a climate crisis that is moving forward, as Dr. Fireman described, more quickly than most people realize. It is now recognized that the fracking industry is the key driver of the US greenhouse problem. And yet Duke Energy is pursuing this enormous expansion, 15 to 20 new gas-fired power plants, a pipeline, this merger, as if there's no problem ahead. Now, we had a witness, NC Warren fielded a witness who is an expert in the leakage of methane throughout the gas industry. That's where the greenhouse problem is coming from, leakage and venting. And he testified in pre-file testimony that certainly regulation of methane is going to drive up the price of natural gas. Our captive regulator said, "That doesn't matter, we don't even want to hear from this guy. We're not going to make Duke Energy debate him either." Secondly, we've got a situation where the actual fracked gas industry is in great decline, lots of bankruptcies, not just because of low prices, but because they grossly overestimated the amount of gas that is underground at these shale plays around the country. And meanwhile, you've got so many, too many companies trying to put pipelines in and draw the gas out. That's the opinion of an industry analyst just a few weeks ago. So we've got the economics, and we fielded an expert from the Canadian Geological Survey who would wanted to testify to that effect. This commission, the captive regulator, said, "We don't even want to hear from him, and we're not going to make Duke answer to him either." So we have several crises in play here. We've got a climate crisis, we've got an economic crisis with the very real likelihood of soaring electricity rates based on this direction that Duke is taking us in, and we've got a serious crisis of democracy, and we've got captive regulators who don't do their job in representing the people of the state, instead they seem to be working primarily for Duke Energy. Thank you.
Thank you, Satana, Brianna, Taylor, Richard, and Jim. We'll now entertain any questions you might have for the speakers. No questions?
The question was, will there be more pipelines and power plants? I don't know about the pipelines. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline that Duke and Dominion are proposing and hoping to build has been delayed and there's mounting opposition, and please talk to folks today and hear more about that. By Duke Energy's latest filing of its 15-year plan, it proposes to build up to 11,000 megawatts of natural gas-fired power plants, and that equates to around 15 to 20 large power plants. That's what the plan, the Atlantic Coast Pipeline would be primarily being brought to North Carolina to supply Duke Energy's fracking, gas-burning power plants.
Let's give our speakers a hand of applause. And now we're going to have a speak-out. And if there are any students here that would like to speak, I want to call on you first, and then after that, anyone who's going to be speaking inside at the public hearing can have an opportunity to come and summarize what you will be saying inside. So, any students? Anyone who's speaking inside would like to speak out? Anybody? Well, hearing none, thank you all for coming, and, hold on, we have someone, Steve.
I'm Steve Norris, I'm going to testify inside. And the thrust of my message is going to be that the North Carolina Utilities Commission and the public staff were created were created to regulate Duke Energy and other utilities. Unfortunately, they've turned that on its head. So essentially, their job now is to regulate us, the public. This is democracy stood on its head so that corrupted utilities and huge utilities like Duke Energy can get control, undermine our democracy, give us a semblance of democracy by allowing us to speak in there. But then, most of us assume they are not going to be listening. So this is really important, what we're doing today. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I think it's now time to, to sign up.
Hello, my name is Kathy Chandler. And I'm a citizen of Durham, a native North Carolinian, and a person that feels great sorrow for the future of our state if we don't do something about this. Dear Chairman Finley, the customers of Duke Energy in our state are already held accountable for uncontrolled decisions and expenses of a runaway monopoly with no regard to the people of the state they serve. Everything Duke has done in the last decade has been about power... Has been about power, their power, not energy. If North Carolina's well-being and energy security were their concern, we would be a top solar energy supplier in this country now. Instead, Duke was allowed to dismantle that decade of solar achievement on the dawn of a solar revolution in technology, price, climate capability, or compatibility, and jobs. Jobs for North Carolinians at a much-needed economic time. Solar jobs now outnumber construction jobs in California. And to think that we used to be in that competitive league. The Utilities Commission that you chair allowed Duke Energy to abandon this clean but inevitable industry, which immediately pulled out of North Carolina for greener pastures, South Carolina, and Georgia, where Duke Energy does not control the legislatures and their governors. We, the people of North Carolina, need your commission to represent us. This is your mission and your assignment. As a state and as North Carolina taxpayers, you cannot indebted us to two North Carolina monopolies with the merger of Piedmont Natural Gas that, that exhibit more power as public utilities than any corporation in our state. The only power, more powerful, is our Public Utilities Commission. Consider your responsibilities to our state's environmental health, economic health, and long-term future. The citizens of North Carolina deserve educated, meaningful, and truthful hearings. We deserve and require transparency. We are the public in our Public Utilities Commission. Sincerely, Kathy Chandler.
Thank you, Kathy. So we're going to head in, and those of you who are speaking need to go ahead and sign in. Signing in and speaking is going to first come, first served. And you need to go in through the front doors for security purposes. And I don't think that you're going to be allowed to bring in any signs. But you can try if you like. Thank you all for coming. Thank you Connie!